Tell me, Joe, we're sitting in the mic, Eric will say the mic. Show some story here. And I'll get the camera. I can bring the mic.
Maybe we just.
I think when you do that, does it not kill all of them? Nope, it was supposed to. That's the way it was sold to me, that that button would kill everybody. So if somebody rambled on, that you could shut them off. I guess not. Power without bad connection. We need one here with the five minutes. Five minutes are up. Remember that first day when Joyce went over the five minutes and somebody let her go? Blessing Mark.
He was so nice back then.
Oh, what?
You were so nice back then, and Jayden now.
That will happen.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. We're gonna have Ian Pearce do our invocation. Everyone, please rise.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful day of life that you've blessed us with. Pray that you would have your hand over the city councils. They meet tonight to make the decisions on behalf of our great city. Pray that you would bless this crowd that's assembled here tonight. Pray that you'd bless all of our citizens here as they go about their day-to-day lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. May standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Carnes.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Downs.
Here.
Approval of minutes from regular meeting, January 13th, 2025. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and second to approve as presented.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. We have no treasures report tonight. Approval of bills to be paid. Same thing here. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and second to approve as presented.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick and second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, proclamations. We've got 2025 Miss Ducoy and a Phipps Day is tomorrow. This was a, didn't have to do much change into the proclamation from last year because second year in a row, we had a Phipps family girl win it. So, it is. Might have to do something about keeping it going for a third year, Sarah and Bob. No, you know, really cool to see, you know, see the same family win a back-to-back and and just a really good family who quite honestly means a lot to me as well. Their mom is my kindergarten daughter's teacher and she wanted to come see her tonight, so she's sitting here in the second row, smiling at me in her way, so. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and read this, but you know, congratulations to Dana and Bob and Sarah as well, so. All right, whereas Anna Phipps was crowned Miss Ducoy 2025 on January 3rd, 2025. And whereas the Miss Ducoy pageant came back to existent to to combine the reverence for the past tradition of Miss Ducoy, as well as a much-needed supplement of scholarship opportunities for all young women attending Ducoy High School. And whereas the Miss Ducoy pageant believes in the empowerment of these incredible young women through philanthropy, community involvement, and self-discovery. And whereas each year the woman selected to represent her town as Miss Ducoy is held to a high standard as an upstanding citizen of her town and a model of excellence for the younger generation to come. She is to spend her reign, excuse me, as a vessel for charity, positive representation, and as a voice for her peers in her community. To date, the Miss Ducoy winners and contestants have been awarded over $18,000 in cash and scholarships. And whereas Anna embodies all the amazing qualities that make Miss Ducoy a symbol of excellence, Anna is smart, vivacious, and courageous, as seen in choosing to participate in our program even though she is no stranger to the stage. Anna has an ease about her presence. She is an excellent communicator, making everyone, young and old, feel valued and loved as a friend. She is kind, funny, and outgoing, a perfectionist when she puts her mind to something. We as a community are blessed to spend the next year having her as our representative and our queen. Anna Phipps is the perfect representation of what Miss Ducoy stands for as a figurehead in this community. Now therefore, I, Josh Downs, Mayor of the City of Ducoy, and the City Commissioners, extend congratulations and best wishes for her reign as Miss Ducoy in 2025 and do hereby proclaim January 28th, 2025, Miss Ducoy 2025 Anna Phipps Day in the City of Ducoy and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Proclaim this 27th day, January 2025. Congratulations.
I think it's only fitting if you get a day, you get to talk a little bit too. But I just wanted to say that the Miss Ducoy Pageant is proud to provide a platform of confidence, service, and excellence to the young women attending Ducoy High School. Miss Ducoy can continue to exist because of the support of our community leaders, our school, and the countless volunteers and sponsors who believe in the importance of higher education and in the special women competing for the title. Ducoy history was made on January 3rd as Anna Phipps was crowned the 36th Miss Ducoy by her sister, my little Grace Phipps. Anna is a sophomore at DHS. She is the daughter of Bob and Sarah Phipps. Anna is a talented, outgoing young woman. She is goal-oriented, driven, and the perfect representative for our town and the young women of DHS. Anna joins this legacy of incredible former queens who have held the title of Miss Ducoy, and she will spend her year championing the arts and serving as an ambassador to her community through various philanthropy opportunities and community involvement. So I would like to introduce to you, Miss Ducoy 2025 Anna Phipps.
Well, first of all, thank you, Rachel, and thank all my family so much for being here tonight. I appreciate you guys coming. And I just want to thank the council for allowing me to come up here and speak tonight. I appreciate it. I am so excited for the year ahead. I cannot wait. I already have so many fun things planned, my service project. I'm already mapping it out in my head. I cannot wait and I just, I'm so grateful. I thank you guys so much for this opportunity and let's have ourselves a year. So, thank you so much.
Have you guys all come up? Yeah. You and your family, whoever's here. All right, congratulations again, Anna. We look forward to being with you at all the events. Okay, we can skip down to ordinances, resolutions. Resolution 2025 R01-01, resolution authorizing a fundraising block, roadblock for Perry County Humane Society, and this is for final approval. Would entertain a motion and second to do so.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025 R0102, resolution authorizing a TIF agreement between Chris Harris and the City of Ducoy, and this is for debate and public display. Looks like Jeff's making his way up here, so we'll let him explain what this is for.
Good evening. Rare is it that a community suffers, not one, but two building collapses in near proximity to each other in the main business district. Kind of a sad story. We're working feverishly to figure out ways to get the demolition going and the sites cleared and the streets reopened. This particular one involves the extension of a redevelopment agreement to Chris Harris for the removal at 16 and 18 North Division Street. This is a privately owned property. It will be demoed privately to the tune of $50,000 that Mr. Harris will bring to the project. The TIF will reimburse $18,000, which is predicated on Mr. Harris' ability, demonstrated ability, to pay the difference back in the form of a loan. We are using the Ducoy Community Development Corporation as a wonderful tool. We're fortunate to have it. To make the loan for the, for the $50,000, we'll use TIF like we did with the, with the roofing program in downtown to guarantee the loan. And then after the, after the Ducoy Development Corporation has reimbursed its $32,000, that permanent phase will also continue to use TIF to guarantee the $18,000 loan. This, this is a companion, in a way, because of the timing to the, to the failure at 115 East Main. We have shown and demonstrated our commitment to doing that. There are circumstances that have arisen that makes us revisit that and try and figure out how to do it because we have differences in prices. We remain committed to do that project. And if we're successful with this particular project, we'll have a template to use for 115 East Main. So it is not, not always thrilling to stand before you to say that we're gonna use money, public money, to tear something down. We like to build things, but sometimes you do have to take a step forward and occasionally a step backwards, and that's kind of where we are with this. Questions?
I'm good. Anybody got anything?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, if there are no questions, then we need a motion and second to put that on public display for two weeks.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And to go along with this, resolution 2025 R0103, resolution authorizing a loan guarantee to DCDC, and this is for debate and public display.
Briefly, it separated this particular aspect of the project as the loan guarantee that we're using TIF money for the $18,000 loan that's a rem that after the building is taken down. We separated that so that we could show clear, a clear line of collateral to DCDC. Okay? So in this instance, we've crafted a deal where the city really has limited involvement. It's a turnkey job. And the risk that we have, that we put on the backs of DCDC is negligible, none, because of TIF. TIF is taking on all the risk.
I have a question. Who will own the property once it's down?
We didn't discuss that other than it remains his to liquidate. If the council wanted something in exchange for, for that investment, that's fine. I, I'm not personally real big on taking downtown properties unless it would be held by somebody like DCDC.
Just a question, that's all.
That's what was part of the agreement with on Main Street.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't it be the same?
We can make it the same. The, I, I believe that we have a better, a better opportunity and a quicker opportunity to see development on Main Street. So that was the reason for it. If, in fact, they want to come back as private owners and do something on that property, and we can use TIF again, that's fine. But I, I, I think that we have a reasonable opportunity to do something on Main Street because of the frontage on the street itself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need a motion and second to put on public display.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, and looks like we have no other business, so commissioners comments? Kayla?
Nothing from me.
Ian?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Wait.
Nothing.
Jill?
Nope.
Coach?
Congratulations, Anna. You've got quite a few qualifications there. It takes two pages of them. But congratulations, and I know you'll do a good job.
Ruth?
Congratulations, Anna, and thank you, Rachel, for taking the pageant back up and doing what you do with it. We appreciate you.
All right, I've got a couple of things. Want to say congratulations to Ron Darnell on his retirement. January 22nd was his final day with the city. How many years did he have, Ruth?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah. I knew he was coming up on 20, so, you know, retired as our water department director, and, and Ron did a great job for a long time in a number of different roles for the city, and, you know, he grew up with both of his boys, so it's kind of bittersweet to see him go out, but he retired on his birthday, so turned 65, and I wish him the best. Congratulations to our high school boys basketball team for winning the Johnson City Arrowhead Classic last weekend, and we had three people on the all-tournament team, Jaden Davis, Jonathan Brown, and Jeremiah Jones was the tournament MVP, so they're kind of turning their season around here towards the end and looking to get better as they go into regionals. February 3rd, our Amtrak platform renovation project will, will begin with tree removal and concrete removal on the north end of the platform. There will be a new ADA accessible ramp, drainage improvements, and there will be some parking modifications during this project, but it is a project that's handled by Amtrak, not the city, but we will keep everyone informed of any changes. Station will continue normal operations for the duration of this project, which they're saying is November this year at this point, so some good improvements and a commitment by Amtrak, I think, long-term to keeping our facility open, which is a good thing for everyone in this general area. And last but not least, Commissioner Ward couldn't be here tonight. He wanted me to mention one of our former police officers, Eric McCroy. A lot of people in this room may know him. He's got a serious, pretty serious battle with cancer going on, and his family's got a Facebook, a GoFundMe on Facebook under his wife, Bobby McCroy's page, and I think our police guys are gonna do something for him, so just keep him in your prayers. Eric was with the department for many years and was, was a good officer, and hate to see anybody struggling with anything like that ever, so keep in your prayers, and if you can donate to the family, please do so. All right, anybody in the crowd? Pete? Nothing? All right. Doug, you coming up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes. As some may have seen last week, there was an article in regards to the county board meeting in regards to some issues on revised administrative rules that are being done by EMA that impacts emergency management. I just want to make sure, you know, there are some current concerns I have on, on those rules ourselves for us as a non-mandated accredited municipality. And there are some liability issues that could be there, but they'd be different for us since we have control of most of our departments. But they have made some changes that completely changes the requirements to even be eligible for consideration as a non-mandated accredited agency. That, that could potentially change whether they still will or will not allow us to be a, a non-mandated. That's strictly up to the director, but, but the rules that are out there right now, there, there's a lot of changes, especially in the planning aspect. For years, our plan's been more of a strategic plan, but they're directing it more into tactical plan. And unfortunately, as emergency management's not a tactical agency, we're more that, that support agency, so could it be more involvement in some of our department heads? If we're allowed to pursue accreditation still in '26 as a next cycle. But the final version of the rules have not been posted, but they're, they have notified in the register that they plan to submit rules by the end of February. But, but I have been involved in that discussion for over a year. I was part of a working group through the Illinois Emergency Services Management Association. We've got a lot of concessions out of those rules, but there's still a few items that we feel kind of could make, kind of would make us a little less, it would decrease our capabilities with them thinking it could increase our capabilities. Really what they're really doing is forcing all municipalities or jurisdiction to have the same plan regardless of size and how we may need to plan for emergency operation the same plan regardless of size and how we may need to plan for emergency operation plan is really different than even the county or, or, or even a larger jurisdiction such as like Aurora, that's a non-mandated accredited. But that's something we're watching, and if there's any changes in that, I expect when it comes to our ability to maintain our accreditation, I'll make sure I'll, I keep the council aware of that over the next year to eighteen months.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, if not, would entertain a motion and second to adjourn at six twenty-one.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes.